Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the leading of the Auburn School Committee, September 2nd, 2020. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Seeing none. We have no special recognitions, so I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 8:26.
Bring that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman? And Mr. Scobie, yes. That is a vote. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Hanfield for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. I appreciate you joining us in our last remote meeting of this era. We will be resuming regular live meetings at a place to be determined, September the 16th. However, tonight, we felt it important that we wanted to, as we do every year, bring forward our new hires to the district and officially welcome them at the opening school committee meeting for the school year. So if the principal is present, I will have them introduced in your teacher. If not, I will do that. So, Mr. DeLong Champ, you are first up.
Hello, everybody. I am extremely excited to introduce Elena Attepreddy. I don't know if I see Elena on my screen right now. But in a very, very crazy summer, Elena was one of our highlights. We, I feel like we stole her right out of Holy Cross College, and we cannot wait to see her in action this upcoming fall. There's Elena on my screen right now, so good to see you, Elena.
Good to see you. Thank you so much. I'm so excited. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. DeLong Champ. And Elena, welcome. On behalf of myself and the Auburn Public Schools, we welcome you to the district. So thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me.
Mr. Desto, are you on? There you are, Mr. Desto. You're up.
Yes, I am here. Thank you for the opportunity. I feel really good about it. We have a very small recruiting class this year, but a very strong one with two blue-chip recruits. They both come with some explanation, okay? First, I'm going to start with our youngest new member of our staff, Joshua Ponte León, who, in addition to having one of the epically cool names in history, and I hope that you're not going to cop out and let the kids call you Mr. P., you've got to make them say the whole thing. Josh is a great kid. He's got a year of experience under his belt, so we've got him in his second year. He's been captain of every team he's ever played on, including his high school and college football teams. And I bring this up not because sports necessarily translates to being a good computer technology teacher, but it does speak to leadership and character. And I feel like we've got a real good young one there in Josh, so we're proud to bring him on board. And do you want me to pause here or go right into our second candidate, Mr. Hanfield?
Mr. Desto, you can go right into the second outstanding candidate you've brought forward tonight.
Thank you. And this comes with a really funny story, because my son is a tremendous baseball fan. And Pat Armstrong is what we call a triple threat in the business of physical education. He's a physical education teacher. He is also a certified trainer, and he is also a certified strength and conditioning coach. And for the past eight years, well, the previous eight years, last year, he was a physical education teacher at a high school. But the year before that, the previous eight, he was a strength and conditioning coach for the Baltimore Orioles, in the Baltimore Orioles system. And when I told my son, I thought he was going to be excited, and he said, "Well, Dad." He said, "The Orioles were in last place." And I said, "Yes." I said, "But AJ, Mr. Armstrong doesn't pick the players. He just makes sure that they're strong and well-conditioned." So it's a cute little story, but we're really proud to bring Pat on board. We think he's going to do a great job, and the kids are really going to be fortunate to have somebody of his experience level and knowledge level as their physical education teacher.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Desto, and Patrick and Josh, again, on behalf of myself and the Auburn Public Schools. Welcome aboard. We're thrilled to have you as part of our team. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Honored to be here.
Mrs. Stanek, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you, even though it's on the computer screen. I was, I have one hire to share with you, and unfortunately, she's stuck out with the password, so she's trying to get in. So just one of those glitches that we're all working through with those passcodes. So we hired Taylor R. Thod to be our intensive special needs teacher here at Packard Chog. We are opening that classroom this year. We are so excited. She is a recent graduate from Ms. U., and we are very excited to have her. She comes highly recommended from Ted Friend, the superintendent in Sutton, because she's worked with the special education students for many years as a high school student and into her college years. So we are very excited to have her, and I'm sorry that she's having some technical difficulties. But you will get to see her through Zoom, or maybe if you get to come by and visit a Packard Chog at some point. But she's fabulous. She's so excited. She's been in all summer setting up her brand-new classroom.
Yeah, I don't, thank you, Mrs. Stanek. I don't see her in the waiting room, so I don't know. I thought maybe she would have been in the parking lot, as we say. But yeah, unfortunately, she may be, she may be having struggle to get in. But nevertheless, we welcome Taylor to the Auburn Public Schools, and we're thrilled to have her as well. Finally, tonight, we have two last hires here in the district that we're thrilled about. The first, Catherine Grogan, has been hired as our district-wide speech and language pathologist. She's not able to be with us tonight due to a previous commitment, but we are thrilled to have Catherine joining us in that capacity. We do, however, have Laura Marcus with us. Hello, Laura. It's nice to see you. She's joining us as a district-wide occupational therapy assistant. So again, to all of you tonight, thank you so much for joining us, and we're thrilled to welcome you to the Auburn Public Schools. We're very excited to have you with us for this year and hopefully for many to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any words from the committee? Words of wisdom, welcoming?
Taylor's coming, hold on.
One more.
She's coming. We'll give her just hello and welcome. Hi, Taylor.
Hi.
Hi, welcome. Sorry you got lost.
It's okay. I'm sorry that I couldn't find the password.
Well, Mrs. Stanek just gave you a wonderful intro. Everybody clapped and stood up, and you missed it.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Stanek.
Isn't that sweet, isn't it? That's how we roll here in our public schools. But we're glad you were able to make it. We were just getting ready to cut to the next part of the program. But thank you very much for joining us, and we're thrilled to have you as part of our team.
Thank you very much.
There she is.
There she is.
Hi, Taylor.
Hi, Mr. DeLong Champ. How are you?
It's very good to see you, Taylor. Congratulations.
Thank you. You too.
Taylor was one of my students, everybody. So I had the fortunate pleasure of watching Taylor grow up into the amazing educator that she's going to be with us at Auburn. So it's a pleasure to see her here. Good stuff.
Nice testimonial.
That's my new superstar, so.
Any comments from the committee?
I'd like to say welcome to all of you. Some of you are my former students, including our fabulous superintendent and fellow school committee members. And I taught 41 years in Auburn, and I loved every minute. And they kind of had to push me out the door to get me to retire. So I wish the same for all of you. Good luck.
Thank you for those comments, Gil. Anyone else?
Through the chair, I just want to commend you all for, you know, making a career leap during the year of 2020. If there's anything that we can do to support you in these very unusual circumstances, please don't hesitate to reach out. I think we're a pretty cohesive school committee, and we try to support the administration. So, you know, come find us if you need something.
Thank you.
Here, welcome to Auburn. I may seem strange being on Zoom, but I swear we didn't bring COVID here. I come from a long, big football family. My brother was a college football player as well. He was also on the baseball team, but majority was just to pick up injured players and move them. He wasn't very good. I hope he doesn't watch this. But welcome to Auburn. I promise it's a good place to be, even if we're virtual right now. I can't wait to actually meet you all and shake your hand.
Yeah, I agree with everybody else. Welcome aboard. And Elena, your smile is contagious. So we're happy to have all of you and looking forward to a great year ahead.
And I would echo all of the sentiments of my fellow board members, and it seems like you're a very bright and excited group, and we look forward to having you in our schools. It is a great place to work. I'm sure you'll find that out. I'm sorry that it's, you're starting under these conditions, but we'll get through it. And when we do, I think you're going to have a great career here in Auburn. And I just want to comment on Mr. Greg Desto, and just let you guys know that he was also somewhat of a local sports legend. So don't let him fool you. I know the size of the package sometimes can be, you know, misleading, but yeah, around these parts, he was really something. But no, guys, seriously, it's great to have you aboard. I think you're going to enjoy your time here, and I wish you lots of luck. And again, as Mrs. Kaufman said, if you ever need any support from us, never hesitate to reach out. Thank you. And if you'd like to hang around, there's lots of exciting things happening here. Otherwise, feel free to... Mr. Hanfield, okay.
Just talking from 15 years of experience, it's riveting, but I'm sure they have more riveting things to do.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a wonderful night, everyone.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone. Bye. Have a good night.
Bye. Thank you.
A good night, everyone.
All right, that was nice.
It's always the nice part of the school year is introduce the enthusiasm, right? And the excitement is just, it's palpable, and it's so nice to see.
So it's nice when they can all do it from home as well, and they don't have to show up on a, you know, school night, especially to our administrators.
I agree. I agree.
All right, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just quick, just wanted to give you an update on where we are return-to-school-wise. We did, as you've heard me discuss in previous meetings, we did reach obviously an agreement with the AEA to return to school. Part of that agreement, but also something that we wanted to do as well, was to make doubly sure that our air and our air quality and all of our school buildings was appropriate and safe. And I'm happy to report that we had, we had an independent third-party company come out Monday to go into all of the classes, well, I shouldn't say all of the classrooms. All of the school buildings, they went into samples of classrooms, a cross-section of classrooms, tested the air, did a cursory review of the HVAC systems that are currently in place in all the buildings, and the tests were extremely positive. So Mr. Fahey, who is our director of facilities and operations, he's going to join me and Dr. Chamberlain next Tuesday to meet with the AEA and review the results of those tests, and then answer any questions, specific questions that they may have. And as you recall, we will, we are committed to doing this testing the first week of every month for as long as we need to, to make sure that, you know, the air quality in each of our buildings is what it needs to be. So I just, I wanted to share that with all of you. And we'll continue to update you as, you know, as we move through the year. But that was, you know, positive news that I wanted to share. In addition to that...
Any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any comments or questions on that? Okay.
Sorry, I have a comment. Last meeting, I was having technical difficulties, and my phone kept falling on the ground. So I wasn't able to give any input on the AEA's decision and their willingness to work with the schools, and they've just been amazing. So I just want to say right now that how thankful I am that they've been so willing to go out of their way to make this work for us. It really speaks volumes about their commitment to the kids and Auburn community. That's all I got.
I would agree with that, and believe it or not, it's not the same all over. So we are, we are fortunate to have educators that work so collaboratively as ours do. So yeah, I thank them as well. All right.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, as we've discussed in the past, we were talking about, you know, kind of our rollout to families. We had talked about, you know, we would do some recorded town halls, and then we'd do some live town halls. We've done those. The last portion of kind of the return-to-school presentations for families is taking place tomorrow, Thursday, September 3rd. There'll be two live presentations by our district nurses, one at 1:15 and one at 5:00. These will be taped as well, and will be available for review after tomorrow if families can't make it. Dr. Chamberlain sent out that information yesterday. And so we're happy to, in that venue tomorrow, review any questions that families may have. They also put together a PowerPoint that was really, I think, geared more towards families in terms of, you know, how the school is handling COVID from a family perspective. And so that will be, that'll be taking place tomorrow. So I just wanted to note that in my comments tonight. And then, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and as part of that reopening plan, we're currently working with the Board of Health and the nurses right now on formal communication letters that are in compliance with HIPAA, so that we can be as transparent as possible with the Auburn community when, you know, if or when, you know, we may have a COVID case, you know, in the community. Dr. Chamberlain's done a lot of work on this with our nurses and with Starling Coil through the town. But, you know, again, we're all focused on transparency piece. And so we want to make sure that, you know, when there is a confirmed case of COVID, you know, in a classroom, that the close contacts, you know, are notified. They'll also be notified by the Board of Health. We also want to make sure that we're notifying our school community as a whole, you know, if we have a positive test, that we've had one, and that although their child may not have been in close contact, we were going to give them a listing of, you know, things to be doing in terms of next steps. So those letters are continuing to be drafted. And, you know, as I said to you last week, as part of our reopening plan, you know, as we are changing things and adding things to our plan, we'll be bringing that to your attention. And so I wanted to bring, you know, bring those to your attention this evening. And then just finally, on, with respect to buses and cohorts, we're working very, very diligently to get these done. As you know, the 28th last Friday was the last day for families to put in requests for cohorts. And so now what we're in, what we're doing now is we're really hand-scheduling kids. We're hand-scheduling kids, 2,800 kids we're hand-scheduling in our buildings, because there's no computer program to do this. So it's an incredible amount of work. And so I know that the public and families, you know, are anxious, you know, to know what their cohort is, to know what their schedule is, so on and so forth. But as I've said to the administrators just as recently as two hours ago, three hours ago, you know, we want to measure four or five times and cut once. What I mean by that is what we're going to send out, we want it to be right the first time. I don't want to be sending something out to families and then say, "Oh, just kidding", and have that happen a couple or three times. You know, it's, we're taking extra care and caution to make sure that we're getting it right for our families to the best of our ability. And people just have to realize that we are literally hand-scheduling kids. And then from there, it has to get uploaded into a computer system, and then we have our final schedules. So it's incredibly intense. But, you know, we're committed to the work, and we're committed to getting it right, and we're committed to honoring as many families' requests as we possibly can. We're also committed to creating bus routes and bus lists that are safe. And it's just, you know, it's just, it's a lot right now. And, you know, as I've said, maybe, I don't know necessarily in this forum, but I've said it in other forums, you know, comparatively speaking to other school districts, we are a skeleton crew. We have an assistant superintendent, a director of PPS, myself, Cecilia, and Joe. That's our central office staff. That's it. Many other school districts have layers upon layers of administrators. We choose not to go that way as a school district, because we want that money going to our kids. We want that money being focused into our teachers, and making sure that our class sizes and their supplies and their educational experiences can be the absolute best that they can be. So I appreciate the fact that there is a lot of desire out there to know what's happening. You know, and when families contact us, we are very good and very diligent about saying to them, "This is what we can tell you right now. You know, if we know where your child currently is placed, you know, we will tell you." You know, but, you know, we always say that's not 100% yet, because, you know, if we have to change a child in a school, it throws off an entire set of schools if there are siblings, because we're all trying to keep them together. And, you know, so there's just a lot, a lot of moving pieces. So I do have a meeting tomorrow, Dr. Chamberlain and I, with the principals to review and update where we are, and then I will be sending a communication out to families tomorrow, either tomorrow evening or Friday, I'm not sure which, just to let them know this is where we are, and basically restate what I've stated to you here this evening, that, you know, we're doing our level best to give your children everything that they deserve in this time of crappy, crappy academic life. So just please be patient with us a few days longer.
All right, thank you for that. Any comments, questions?
Through the chair, I actually just have one question, and it's regarding the nurse's presentation. And I'd also send a question to Dr. Chamberlain as well, but for the purposes of this meeting, are the plans that are going to be presented actually final? Or is there room for negotiation or further discussion?
Well, through the series...
I'll tell you, I'm particularly concerned that right now we're not even considering giving any notification for suspected cases, and if we're not making people get tests, and then we're not... It can take people up to seven days to get a test.
Sure.
I think that it is going to create a vacuum in which there is no information, and then social media will be flying, "Little Johnny went home coughing and spitting up", you know, whatever. Three days later, or four days later, they've, all the kids that this child was in contact with has been, you know, we've really created our own seeding event. So I can certainly take that offline, but I guess for the purposes of this call, I just wanted to know if there's, if this is just the end-all-be-all? Because that is, to me, that is a very, that's a red flag. And I think that puts a tremendous amount of risk on the administration and the school committee, because that's, we could be creating a problem by not having any safeguards there.
Right. No, I think this is the perfect forum to discuss that, if the chair will entertain it. I think the presentation tomorrow, like I've said all along, will continue to be refined. I will tell you that the majority of the information that will be presented, well, all of the information that will be presented tomorrow by our nurses has been put together by our nurses through our Board of Health. And so, you know, that's, that's the information that is in that presentation. You know, with particular concerns relative to, you know, notifying families if we're sending a child out with a suspected case of COVID or symptoms that mimic COVID, you know, my personal feeling on it, just as one voice, is that that's a slippery slope as well. When we start talking about, you know, setting off red flags and concern within the community, I also worry about unfairly having kids unfairly targeted, you know, who may be quote-unquote "the COVID kid". But, you know, like anything else, you know, we're continuously, excuse me, looking at that. And, you know, if the committee feels that that needs to be revised, then so be it. We will do that. But that's my feeling on it.
Thank you. And I certainly don't mean to say that that will be an overarching, anytime somebody has something, we need to automatically, you know, sound the guard. But my concern is especially if the family opts not to get tested, because we cannot make someone get tested.
Right.
It could be too late, you know, and, you know, it might depend on the scenario. Was the child coughing during lunchtime, like, because they don't have masks on? So I'm just happy to hear that it's not already completely set in stone, that we just will not be doing notifications, because I think it sets a... It could also put a tremendous amount of pressure on the child that goes home sick and the people around them. So I, and I don't, I should preface all this by saying, I don't think, I don't think there's an easy answer, but I just don't want, I wanted to make sure that the conversation wasn't closed yet.
I don't believe it is, but I would yield that to the chair.
No, it's certainly not closed. And Dot, I would agree with you as far as, you know, this is, this is serious subject matter. It's uncharted territory, like most of everything that we're dealing with. But I would also err on the side of caution. I think a lot of research has gone into this. We could certainly look around and see what other school districts are doing. However, I don't know that anyone or many of them do as well as we do at anything. But I certainly would be, I would be concerned about my son going home with a runny nose and being labeled as, you know, he's, he's got COVID. Because once, as you, as you, as you bring to our attention, social media and people running rampant on social media, once you bring that to a parent's attention, there are several, if not more than, more than that, parents in town that I certainly would not trust that they wouldn't be spreading it all over the place. If we were dealing with people who weren't so obsessed with, with social media, and I thought that they, they could handle that type of information, then I would certainly, I'd be in full agreement with you, providing that there are no laws preventing us from calling them out. But that's, that's a bigger concern of mine. Alerting families that there's a possible case of COVID with one of our students, and then that blowing up. And that just, I think that would be a terrible failing for the family involved who has nothing but a common cold. And so I'd hate to see that whole "sky is falling" approach on social media for someone who went home with the common cold as, I don't know, half of, half of our children end up with this time of year, heading into the fall and winter.
Sure. And through the chair, I am certainly open to even thinking about a different strategy. If there's a way to prevent someone from just saying, "You know what? It's probably not COVID. I'm just not even going to get tested", which I know we can't make, I don't know how to encourage people to actually... To me, that would resemble, you know, a responsible step, to say, "My kid", you know, especially if the nurse says, "Oh, I don't know. They've got seven out of the 10 possible symptoms. You really should get tested." I don't know how to encourage parents to participate that in that. And then also, if there is a way that we could funnel families into a place that does not take seven days to get a test back. So maybe it's not about the notification per se, or maybe the criteria is much more finite. Do you know what I mean? I just think, I want to make sure that we are walking a fine line and don't, are taking a deeper dive in the fine line that we need to, at the fine line that we need to walk to make sure that we are doing our due diligence as best we can. Because what, the scenario that could happen also is a bunch of kids get off the bus and say, "Little Johnny went home and was hacking all over my lunch", and they had a fever, and then they tell the parents, and that's a whole other mess. So just something to think about.
I'm just going to make one other comment regarding that. I hope that's not the case, and I hope that the parents don't buy into everything that the students come home saying, because as I said, I don't know the percentages. I think probably Dr. McCrillis would know better than I. But there are going to be many, many students who are blowing their nose, taking their masks off and blowing their nose, and they're going to be coughing under their masks. And it's just going to happen. I mean, you walk into any school, if this wasn't, if this was the case of COVID, you walk into any of our schools last year or the year before, as we approach winter, and we could have so many suspected cases that, you know, I think the town would be in a complete tizzy if we, if we said that these are, these are possibilities. These are possibilities of cases. I do, I do like the idea of trying to mainstream that testing or at least speed up that process a little bit. And maybe we need something as far as a policy goes. If it's, you know, if they're showing that many symptoms, you know, I would buy into something like that. But yeah, it's just, I just think so, so many students and staff may be showing some, some signs that, that could be related to COVID, but are more likely the common cold. And I'm afraid we're already going to be losing enough student and staffs, student and staff just based on that alone. Because if they're showing any kind of symptoms, they're going to be staying home. So that's, again, that's my opinion. And your points are very... So that's, again, that's my opinion, and and your points are are very well taken. Um, Dr. McCrillis?
Um, I just, so. From a, through the chair, from a CDC perspective, if you look at their CDC guidelines. A child says they have a sore throat. Technically. They could have COVID and they have to go home, and so we will be sending them home, yes. Um. If I was in high school and I, you know, these kids are going to learn that I have a sore throat, I can go home. Or they could actually have a sore throat and go home. Um, if it's a slippery, slippery soap to say every single time a child says. I have this symptom. We need to notify the entire um. Class or whatever. It's just, I think we're doing it right in that we're keeping these kids six feet apart. And we're having them in masks all day, and um, those two things together, I think. Are putting us in as safe during a global pandemic as we can be. Yes, I think we absolutely need to tell parents immediately, once there is a positive case. Having said that, um. I I think it's, we'd have to be very cautious, having also, though, I was listening in on one of the um. I believe it was the Paketchog, although now I go to two, so. The Paketchog Parent Information Sessions, and I can tell you that the nurse at Paketchog did a wonderful job of. Um, so. Telling, educating parents on the importance of actually being tested. If their child has symptoms. And saying, you know, no, we can't force you, but you know, this is encouraged, and here is why. And um, if all the other nurses are like that, um, I think we're gonna be okay. I also am cautiously. Optimistic that it won't take seven days with um, the new testing guidelines that are going on through the schools. Um, I mean, I I guess that's just my piece, I know that um. You know. That's from a public health standpoint, I think that's the best way to go. Kids are going to come home with with symptoms, and. I do see it getting onto Facebook. Um, I remember before we closed, the child went home with a fever and it went wild. And that was, you know. But. Not every case is going to be COVID, if these parents can go out and test their kids, I think that's awesome, I think that's great. Um, I know I will be, um. And educating parents to do that would be wonderful, because that is, you know, my biggest fear is, yeah, these parents are saying, oh, it's not COVID, I'm not going to test my kids, and they have six out of the seven symptoms. We're talking a different story there, and I think that's where we need to come in with very um. Solid supportive education for parents. On the importance of testing. Um, and if you want me to, or any school commi- committee representation at the nurses. Um, info sessions tomorrow, just let me know. Um, but that, I guess that's my thought on it. Um, I don't want to, from a. Also, from a psychological perspective, we're increasing the stress of everybody around us. If we're saying, hey, this kid had a, had a, not even a fever, this kid had a cough. And they went home, and then. We notify through one call that that happened. That's going to just bump up the anxiety for everybody around them. It's going to be bad enough when, if and when we have to for a positive case. And then, you know, three days later, we say, oh, never mind. It was strep throat or whatever. So that's my thought.
Well said, and and as I said, that could happen quite often, we could be making a lot of those calls, and 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 what may happen with that is. As parents may be deciding to keep um. Um, several of the students in that class home for the, for the following week for for no good reason.
There's a lot of symptoms in a classroom, I trust our district that we're going to tell. Tell the parents in that case, but um.
But will we, so that I I, everything you said made a hundred percent sense, Meg, absolutely. My concern is that it's not documented, okay, I, like, I trust that if we have a lot of symptoms in a classroom, we're going to tell. Well, can we just write that down somewhere? Because I feel like. We need to do everything that we can to make sure that our parents feel like we are. Not just telling them that we're telling them everything, but that. We kind of have our own metrics that are guiding us. And I don't think that's asking too much, because this is such an atypical case, I mean. Whatever the metrics may be.
Through the chair, I'm not sure if I've seen any metrics on that, but that's definitely something that I could even research through CDC or MassDPA, or maybe our DPH would know that. Um. But then, on the other side, like. Strut, well, no, I even, yeah, that would work, because I don't think strep throat's going to spread that like it usually does with our kids being six feet apart and not. Touching everything, so.
I could, Mr. Scobie?
Yes, Dr. Chamberlain.
I I just, to that particular point, um, we had a a first thorough. First introductory training on the zip slip that we've spoken about, that parents are going to be filling out each day before their child comes to school. And one of the things that that does is that it does help us to track symptoms. So you're going to see on the form. You know, the first question, do you have any of these, have any of these symptoms? You answer yes or no. If you answer yes, there's a dropdown that comes down and you select what the symptoms are that your child might be having, cough. Fever, sore throat. Um, all of that gets tracked in the system. And what we're hoping Mrs. Gothe or our lead nurse is going to be able to do is really monitor that, because what it does is it sets up like uh, heat maps, so like to. Watch grade levels, watch schools. Um, and certainly, just by watching that, she can dig in a little bit deeper, like whose class were all these kids in, when, you know what I mean, that kind of thing. So that was another advantage to. Getting that program. Is that it gives us a really technological tool, and the the nurses can put information in as well. So that's going to be another really um, objective tool, right, it's not going to be boy, it seems like. Were there a lot of kids out in Mrs. Smith's class? This is going to document that from the beginning to the end, so I think that's another tool in all of that that's going to be really helpful.
Any other comments?
Uh, just a question for Beth, um, are those heat maps going to be public information?
No.
Yeah, I I I don't know that we're going to show, I I don't know what that, all of this, this program is all protected by HIPAA, there's a lot of confidentiality associated with it. Um, but I would have to ask that, I didn't ask that question, but I certainly can, because we'll be meeting them with the. The Zip Slip folks almost every day. Um, now until we get things up and running and and out to people, so I can certainly ask that question.
And I think one more thing worth noting, um, Meg had touched on it briefly, is we've worked so hard to. Create this six feet apart. You know, environment, and even if a kid, you know, God forbid, does have COVID symptoms or has COVID. If he's six feet apart from. You know, the, from everybody, then with a mask on, those are, you know, the best precautions we can possibly take, so.
And I will tell you that that's the view of our local Board of Health. When they talk, they talk a lot about close contacts. And that's, um, Darlene Coyle is very much number one appreciative that the school went in that direction. Um, and did not go with three, the three feet that had been recommended some time back. Um, she's very happy about that. She's very happy about this, the hand sanitizing and hand washing protocols that are going to be in place. Um, and she feels like along with that, you know, we are really minimizing kids' chances of being that close contact that can potentially. Um, get the virus from someone else, so. You know, I I only speak, I I've been in all these meetings, I'm not a medical professional. But what I do know is that when, you know, you're having this conversation now about scenarios. I've been in meetings for hours with our nursing staff, along with the Board of Health, to do just this. They have talked through every, well, I won't say every, because I think there are an infinite number of possibilities around scenarios in this particular case. But they have dug into this so deeply, talking through all of these kind of things. Um. That, that I just, I just feel so confident in the work that they've done so far. But as I know with anything with this situation, it changes all the time. And we just have to stay on top of the information that comes out, we have to monitor what's going on, we have to be looking at our system, system. Making sure we make changes from there, so I I know that to be true. Uh, much of what we've done, it just continues to change, but we've continued to change and adapt with it to meet the needs, so. Um. I think they've done a great job.
Thank you, and and through the chair, I hope it does not come off as if I I doubt that all of that work has. Gone into this, I I I do not doubt that for a second, I think. A lot of that isn't seen, do you know what I mean, because it has kind of just taken place behind the scenes. And I want us as a school committee and as a group of administrators. To be able to honestly say to the parents, like, if a child gets sick. We did everything that we could. We know that we did everything we do, and because our our parents are essentially trusting us or APS with their children. We gave you all of the information that we had so that you could make the best decision that you could. For me, that has been, it's kept me up at night, weighed heavily on me, so. I I hope all of these questions, actually, you can kind of see where they're coming from, it's not that we doubt that this is happening, it's that, you know. I, you know, parents are putting a tremendous amount of trust in us, and I want to make sure that we're honoring that.
Um, yeah, and and, you know, to that end, if the parents are putting a tremendous amount of trust in us. Um, perhaps we don't have to put that one line in there, perhaps they will trust us, because I trust, and I know you do as well. Um, all of the professionals that have been working hard on this. To to me, um. You know, I I almost don't want to go against the the grain here and say, you know what? Your plan just isn't good enough despite the fact that you put all of this work into it. You had that many professionals together in one place, medical professionals, teaching professionals. Um, psychological professionals, you you've had all of these heads in place working on this. I'm just not about to say, but you know what, I need that one more line in there, because, you know, frankly. Uh, I I that's going to build a little bit more trust for me, that that's going to, that's going to make me feel a little bit more comfortable, it's just not. And and Dot, I'm not. I I'm not disagreeing with you, if that's something that's been keeping you up. Um, I totally understand that, and if that's upsetting some other parents, I understand that as well. Um, but at this point in time. If that's not a recommendation from the. Leadership team, then it's not something that I would support.
Okay, and that's fair, look, I'm I'm here to ask the questions, and I'm, I told this to to Dr. Hanfield. If I'm not asking the questions that I think are relevant, I'm not doing my job, and I shouldn't be on this committee, so I'll continue to ask questions, and if. The committee doesn't agree, that's all fair, but I I would not feel right if I did not raise that.
Understood.
Fair, and I do think, you know, they're very valid, and I know a lot of parents are really worried about that thing, I I mean. I'm on the CDC website almost every day, because I I guess I'm a dork like that, but um. That, you know, I'm kind of following their recommendations as well and what what they're saying. Um, and then also doing my own research behind it um, as well, and I'm sure, um, and maybe you can um, verify this, but if if there was a child. In a classroom that the nurse, you know, said oof, and then they didn't get tested, that's something that I'm sure our nurses would feel comfortable coming. To administration about and um, kind of going from there, would be my hope. Um. I- in that case of a child having multiple symptoms. In actuality, the way research is going, it could be a teacher that has those multiple symptoms with the child not having many, at least at our younger ages, so. Um, that's something we should watch for as well, but. Um, I I I mean, from what I can tell, the t- the nurses um. Now have a pretty cohesive relationship with administration, so.
And through the chair, I think uh, Dr. Hanfield raised this point last week. That our biggest concern should be what happens outside of the schools at this point, because I don't hear of many. Sports teams mentioning trends in symptoms and stuff, so. Um, I mean, keep that in mind, too, there's a ton of parents that are more than willing to put their kids on these teams and travel from town to town. Um, and do their thing and uh, not think twice about it, not wearing masks and whatnot, so. Um, I think we've been, our leadership team has been. Totally, they've gone above and beyond, um, you know, looking at science and looking at data on this. So, um, I don't know, I support them.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I guess we will move on to unfinished business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, as I think I mentioned last week, uh, we have special town meeting scheduled for October the twenty seventh, uh, twenty twenty. Um, per the notice uh, of the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen, they opened the warrant. Um, on August seventeenth, and it closes on September the eighth. Uh, and it closes draft warrant articles, um, seeking your approval at this time. Article one, um, the school department's received pricing to upgrade the exterior doors at Auburn High School. Uh, which exceeds the amount allocated for this at the annual town meeting in May of twenty eighteen. And so the school department is seeking to repurpose the uh, the balance um, from purchase of the district truck. To supplement the cost of the project, and therefore, um, we're looking uh, for that request to be approved by the town. Uh, article two. Is the school department's looking for approval for an easement in order for national grid to complete the electrical upgrade to the service at Bryn Mawr Elementary. Uh, this requires the installation of two poles, um, and a ground mounted transformer. And then going along the lines of proactive work, uh, article three. If you recall, there was an oil tank removal um, at Paketchog, and um, it did not. Um. Require uh, the um, removal of of any sort of hazard waste or anything like that. And so there's a balance in there uh, for about approximately thirty five thousand dollars. Um, to continue work on the HVAC at Paketchog. Um, this is work that's been going on at Paketchog since roughly two thousand and two. And again, it's proactive HVAC work um, to improve. Um, the HVAC systems um, in the older part of the Paketchog building. As we seek to move away from steam heating classrooms. Um, we need to be switching out um, the uni vents uh, in those buildings. So I don't want anyone to be confused uh, by that third article to. In the sense that they would be taking away from that, that the HVAC at the Paketchog is not sufficient, it's it's more than sufficient. Um, but in the older building at Paketchog, we do have steam heat and steam radiators. And in order for us to move away from that and to modernize um, the heating system. Um, we need to do some HVAC work uh, in that building, and so again, it's. Um, work that's been ongoing, um, and so it's it's nothing, um, it it's nothing related to. Anything to do with air quality or or anything like that as it relates to return to school, this is an entirely separate project that's been going on. For a number of years, um. And so we're looking to repurpose that money for that project.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant articles as presented.
Should unmute myself. Do I have a second? Thank you.
A second.
Roll call vote, oh, I mean, any, any com-? Any comments on that?
Yes.
Gal?
Um. Are we not buying the truck or was there money left over?
Oh, we purchased the truck, and um, yeah, so we purchased the truck suit through existing funds. Um, and there's a a balance there, um. And so it's it's cleaner to, when we take out money for CIP purposes. Um, it's just preferred and cleaner that the um, the manner within which we, or the reason why we took the CIP funds. That we continue to utilize those funds in that existing school. Um, so it's it's money that's there, um, and and was left over as part of that, so we're looking to. Put that money back into the school just in in, you you know, in a different fashion from a realized savings.
Okay, great, because we had been told the truck wouldn't pass inspection, and I was hoping we weren't, we weren't going to keep using it.
We're anxiously awaiting, through the chair, we're anxiously awaiting the arrival of our new truck, so it's on our. We're just waiting for it.
Okay.
Correct. Correct.
Any, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, Dr. McCrillis? Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, that is a vote. And we now move on to new business.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I I don't have any new business at this time, um, I will, however, uh, move on to teaching and learning, I have Dr. Chamberlain. I don't know if you want to share some, uh, just a brief overview of the first few days of school for the teachers.
Yeah, so I, again, once again, I will go back to our school nurses, they did a phenomenal job with um. Actually, three sessions over three days of training. Uh, the first day was an extensive look at some of the COVID nineteen uh, protocols. They talked about mask wearing, they talked about social distancing, what good hand hygiene looks like. Along with some of the general scenarios that they'll talk about at their presentation tomorrow for families. So some were very similar, um, and staff also had an opportunity to ask questions. Uh, we then followed that up with a second session uh, on Tuesday, so that. Folks kind of had the time to let what they had heard on the first day soak in. folks kind of had the time to let what they had heard on the first day soak in. What were they now questioning? They came back with some great questions. Um, nurses provided some information to them on managing anxiety and stress because we feel like our staff may be facing some of that. So that was a good addition that day. And then on the third day, again, another question and answer time, followed by the general information they usually do around allergies and those kinds of things. So that was the wrap up today. Um, we had some teachers at Auburn High School who created a phenomenal presentation on using Zoom and NearPod, which is a tool for presenting that can be used on Zoom. Um, and that was open to all teachers. That was really well received. Teachers were very appreciative of that. Um, along with lots of smaller sessions on things like CSOW and all of that. So we head to the end of the week tomorrow. There'll be some additional, uh, faculty meetings, talking about school-based safety things. That's been ongoing. Uh, and then next week, we head into more of that time for them to plan and prep and to provide some orientation activities for students. Um, but I've received numerous, uh, emails from folks just really being thankful for the time. And I will say, you know, I initially said, oh my goodness, 10 days. And it's just been a tremendous gift. Honestly, because some of these things, people just really have to wrestle with and talk through. And it's just, we feel so fortunate to have the time to do that. Um, now as the preschool principal, with, I have to keep reminding myself that that's, uh, that's my other hat. Um, I have to get in and do that principal thing, which I absolutely love. Um, but it's been great to have those conversations with staff about, you know, what do we have for PPE and how do we do that? Particularly at the preschool, how will we, uh, manage our youngest students? So we're working through all that and very grateful to have the time to do so. So yes, it's been a great start so far. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any comments or questions for Dr. Chamberlain?
Through the chair, I just had a teacher reach out to me today saying how good she feels about it. She's a preschool aide, um, saying how she good, how good she felt about the orientation so far. And she could tell that everybody had really thought out the plan and that she, the end of her, of her text actually said, now I believe that we can do this. So hopefully that makes you feel good because they, um, you know, I think a lot of nerves going in. So.
That's excellent.
And we've just tried to, you know, they, this is a process. We've been talking about this a lot for a long, long time, right? They haven't been, so they need some time. So it's really, so far I think it's worked out very, very well. Good. That's great.
Thank you for that testimonial. And no other comments? We will move on to everyone's favorite time of the evening, business and financial.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I have a very short report again. Um, I provided you a year-to-date budget report um, dated, um, August 28th. And along with that, I have a, um, small list of budget transfers between the same series, um, for your information as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that's the end of my report.
Any comments or questions? Well, very short and very sweet a- as usual. Um, thank you very much for that.
I thank you all for your support.
And if there's nothing else, um, Dr. Hanfield?
Uh, nope. As I said at the outset of the meeting, our next meeting, um, will be the 16th and we will identify a, um, a location for that. And we will, we'll let you know once we, um, once we have that decided.
Excellent. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, that is a vote. Good night, everyone.